Good evening, everyone. Oh, yeah. I am. I am Mayor Robinson and I am calling this meeting to order. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. This is our first meeting for the year 2024. Glad to see everyone here. Happy New Year to you all. Next will be led, the invocation will be led by Councilwoman Cooper. The pledge will be led by Councilman Brown. Please stand if you may.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for another year in which we have never seen before. We pray that on tonight, that every decision that is made is for the betterment, not only for the betterment of the community, but the betterment as, the betterment of Lake City as a whole. Lord, we just pray that you keep us all this year, keep us healthy, and keep us well throughout the year. Lord, we just ask that you continue to be with us as council members and as a city as a whole. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Cooper. Thank you, Councilman Brown. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members?
Mayor Givens Robinson?
Present.
Mayor President Nicole Singletary. Councilmember William Askey.
Present.
Councilmember William Askey.
Present.
Councilmember Joanna Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Solomon Crosby.
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brown.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I find there to be a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Move to adopt?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second, all in, any questions about the agenda tonight? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, approval of minutes from the December 12, 2023 regular mayor and council meeting?
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. We don't have any introductions for tonight. We have one presentation, and that was Pastor Daniel Hall, New Life Seventh Day Adventist Church, updates on what his church is planning for the community in 2024. I know that Pastor Hall had, he had to leave out of the state tonight, but he said that he would send a representative. Is that representative here tonight? Okay, if not, we will move that probably to the next meeting. Next is public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. You come up, please sign your name on the sheet provided and contact information legibly, please.
Signed in already. Happy New Year to all elected officials and to the sheriff's departments, Mr. TJ Joy, Mr. Darren Yarborough, and Mr. Tommy Sullivan, and anybody else. Those are the three I know, okay? I stand before y'all once again, sorry I missed the last meeting. And it's my New Year wish that all elected officials, along with hired personnel and the citizens of Lake City, will work together to make this a better place for everybody. See you at the next meeting. Thank you. Come on out, I'm sorry.
I'm Ari Hooker, and I write where I talk, a Lake City citizen, mayor, and council. One primary concern that I've wished to lift, I received a phone call from my daughter's school in Florence 1 telling me that classes and everything were canceled. I received a phone call from Florence 2 and 3 because at one point in the last seven years, I had a child in those schools. I'm worried about communication one-on-one with citizens in emergency weather, inclement, you know, whether, what we get from the city, knowing that city offices, buildings are closed. I know it posted on the website. I'm a Facebook head, I stay on Facebook all the time. However, I have membership, I have persons I know that oftentimes do not know what's going on in the city. I know we have invested, and I'm proud of Lake City for investing in communication and information, and information technology. But the mother in the house by herself, the person that only has a phone or cellphone, needs to know what's going on in the city, especially during times of weather conditions and crisis, especially when we're having water and flash flooding in this area. So I'm just asking for the council mayor to please look at how it is that we're communicating directly to citizens so that everybody knows, so that I know what's going on, and I can share it with my neighbors and my family in persons close to me. So I thank you for that consideration, and I too say Happy New Year, and can't wait to see what we together can do this year, because you all are a wonderful man and a wonderful council. Thank you so very much. One minute.
Good evening, mayor and councilor.
Good evening.
Council, too, I wish you a blessed and Happy New Years as you move forward to make a difference here in Lake City for the citizen. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I come in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, giving your name thanks and praise and lifting you up because you are worthy to be praised. Father God, thank you for bringing us through another storm, Father God, that wasn't that much devastated here in Lake City, God, and we pray for others, Father God, who may have been affected real hard with this storm. God, we pray, Father God, for the city of Lake City as we are in search of a new chief, Father God. I pray that God you send us a woman and a man, all men of God, who have a heart for you, who know where you are, Father God, and that will be all friendly to this Lake City that will get to know the people here in Lake City. God, I pray you continue to bless us here in Lake City, that we will unify as one in Lake City, Father God. We come against division, racism, anything that keep us separated, Father God. God, again, I thank you, Lord, I praise you and lift you up in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If none, we're gonna move forward with our meeting. Next, we have legislative.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, I'll have before for your approval ordinance number 2024.001 for first reading. An ordinance expanding the city of Lake City by annexing Florence County TMS 00195-31-041. Said partial being continuous to the current corporate boundaries of the city owned by the McLeod Regional Medical Center of the PD, who has duly petitioned for annexation and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.001 for first reading, please.
Move to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? William, do you mind explaining to council and the citizens where this area is?
On 52 North, if you go to Walmart, right up under the bridge, underpass at 378, immediately to the right is the eight acres they have purchased.
Thank you. Any other questions, council?
When will the work start, construction?
Their hoping is to open in summer of this year for the offices and the mobile x-ray.
Okay, you know the size of the facility?
Five thousand square feet is what I'm hearing. That's phase one.
Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your consideration, ordinance number 2024.002, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, affirming and setting forth its document retention policy and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.002 for first reading.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
Can you explain to the public what this is in reference to, William?
By law, through the state of South Carolina, we are required to follow the guidelines set forth, and this is confirming that we are going to do that and adhere to all the rules and regulations, and that we will notify them based on the documents that we will destroy and the method of destruction. We follow this procedure anyway, but we just are now recertifying that we're going to obey the rules set forth in the 2003 edition.
And that's from the Municipal Association?
Through the South Carolina Archives Association with the state of South Carolina, which the Municipal Association also promotes.
Can you, Mr. Dave, type of perch equipment?
Which one?
No, ma'am, we're on the retention of records and destruction of records, number 2024002.
Any more questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your consideration, ordinance number 2024.003, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,450,000 relating to the purchases of equipment and payments of related costs for the city of Lake City, authorizing the execution of other necessary documents and papers and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.003 for first reading, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
I have a question, just what, what equipment it related to?
This is the very same equipment that was approved in the budget that we passed for July 1, 2024.
This is, I'm sorry to cut you off.
The list is in the pack. It starts with the comprehensive plan, media board, repairs to the fire department, judicial redecor, as you can see, we've already done that, some of these things have already been taken care of. The intent was not to have this financed at the very point of July 1, because all our debt is due at the same time in August, September, October, so we waited until this period of time to spread out our payments of debt. So now we're looking to finance these items and to complete the purchase of the equipment.
Okay, so anyway, the public can see that list?
Do we have this list up?
Posted, what, number 11.
No, ma'am, it's not up for the screen.
Can we get copies?
Yes. I'll have copies delivered.
I mean, for the public, you mean?
Yeah, for the public. Can we?
We can make sure we get copies.
Here's a copy machine back here.
Let's go ahead.
And then, I have another question, William.
You want to hand that to the clerk or? And we'll go ahead and move forward.
Can you get this copy for us, please? What was the other question?
The comprehensive plan update, is it, has it already been updated?
I'm sorry.
The comprehensive plan update?
We have done some preliminary work to it, but determined that we might need to do the extensive comprehensive plan update. We've done a five-year review. We have five more, five more years before the actual update to the comprehensive plan. So the existing plan has been updated with the path that we're already following.
Are copies available?
We can have those copies, they're on the website, right?
No.
We'll make sure that they are available on the website.
There were no modifications to the plan, it was just parts of the plan with review, but there were no modifications to the plan, but we did get a copy of what we did.
Okay.
Can we get a date, we should be expected?
It's not gonna change five years.
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry. Your question, Councilmember Crosby.
You said you, it would be placed on the website?
We'll get it placed on the website by the end of the week.
End of the week?
Yes, ma'am, and your question, please, councilmember.
You said that it'd be five years before the next one is actually done?
The actual, complete overhaul will be, the constitution of the plan will be in another five years. We'll probably start on that within four years because it's a major undertaking, and we'll probably hire the COG to do it for us.
The PD COG.
Just, yeah, why, I have copies of copy, has a plan in booklets in my office, it's already there, ready for anybody to take.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anyone in the pub, in the audience who want to get a copy of it, they should be able to get one, right? The comprehensive plan, five-year plan. It will be in my office, if you need a copy of it, you can come down here and request.
Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, ordinance number 2024.004, first reading. The city of Lake City requires the current business license ordinance to adopt the latest standardized business license class schedule as required by the Standardization Act and all matters related, other minor adjustments to the recommendation based by the association. The Municipal Association is requiring us to re-certify the standard business license class schedule.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.004 for first reading, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, council?
My question, the business license would be going up or?
This does not affect the rate, this just affects the standardization of class schedule based on the federal government.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Now we move along to our resolutions.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution number 2024.001, final reading. A resolution seeking approval to accept the appointment of Mr. Alan Cumby to the Planning Commission Board and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.001 for final reading.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
Is he replacing someone?
He is replacing someone that had to fall off the, because she was in two places, right? Could not serve on the board because she already was on another panel.
So it is a concept of interest for a person to serve on two boards?
That's what we've been informed.
She's on Florence School District, so she could serve on board. She felt it was a conflict of interest, so she withdrew. Okay, okay, with the recent loss of, of the Russell Martin, that position will be becoming available, or is this the one?
No, this is not the one. We have not placed that out yet.
I have a name to submit for that one. I would have a name for, to replace Mr. Martin. But I'll submit.
What, they were doing application?
Family of, to be posted next.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council. Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution 2024.002, final reading. A resolution to approve the amended submission of an application for the Land and Water Conservation Grant Act funds for the South Carolina Department, Parks and Recreation and Tourism, to fund construction of a prefabricated restroom and concession building to serve the new multipurpose field, two baseball fields, and all outdoor baseball courts in Blending Street Park.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.002 for final reading, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? None? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, a resolution for the city of Lake City would like to reappoint the following to the Architectural Review Board, ARB, for a two-year term. Harry Askins, two consecutive terms, expiration date would be 2/1/2026.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.003 for final reading, please.
Move to approve?
Need, anyone second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
Just want to say I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution 2024.004, first reading. Authorizing the negotiation execution of a management agreement with the Florence County Sheriff's Office in Florence County, South Carolina, relating to the police map, relating to policing matters and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.004 for final reading.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
Mayor and council, if you would, I would like to invite Sheriff Joy and Captain Yarborough to make a statement if they wish. Gentlemen?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate it. Just want you to know, when I was contacted by the city, Mr. Hall and the mayor, in reference to assisting them in the management of police department, without a doubt, I accepted the challenge, and I can assure you, we're here. I work for you, all of you. I work for you. I'm the sheriff of this county, it doesn't matter if you in the city of Lake City, the city, town of Scranton, Coward, wherever it may be, but I can assure you, Darren Yarborough is my right hand, and he is the man to lead this charge and manage this for you. I can promise you, he is, he is very, very well structured in his management skills. He is over my investigation bureau, and he leads and guides, without a doubt, up here. So I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Darren if he'd like to say something.
Good afternoon, everyone. What the sheriff said, I'm only that because of the leadership that we have at the Florence County Sheriff's Office. One of the things that we brought to Florence County, once he was elected sheriff, was great leadership, transparency, and strong communication, and that's what I'm looking to bring here my short time here in Lake City. I think y'all have a great police department. We're gonna build on what you have, and till you get that person here, that's gonna take you forward, and I can promise you, even though I may be here part-time, I will give you full-time expectation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor and council, for your consideration.
Any other questions or comments, council? I would just like to say, I thank the Florence, Sheriff TJ Joy, Captain Darren Yarborough, and the whole staff of the Florence County Sheriff's Department for coming in and stepping in and, and supporting us. This is what we do. This is Florence County, like he stated, we're all Florence County, no matter what city you are, or municipality you are in Florence County. They are stepping up to support us. Mr. Hall made the call when we needed the help, and they came through, so I really do appreciate it. And just like it was stated, that he will be managing our police department. He's not titled interim chief. We do not have an interim chief at this moment. We are still looking and going through our applications to do the interview process for a police chief, and he will be here to help us manage our police department during that time. So thank you once again. If no other questions or comments, all in favor, show of hands. Go ahead. You have a question or comment before we vote?
While I do understand the importance, we've been without a chief for how long now?
Since the end of October.
October, those two months. And I understand the importance of public safety. Public safety is absolutely crucial in fostering relationships in the community, building strong communities. It helps bring in income. It not only protects and saves, but it protects lives, it protects properties, and this is a very heavy undertaking. I have absolutely no problems with Mr. Darren Yarborough. This is nothing personal, but the manner in which this was carried out is what I do question. And I wish there had been more communication with council, because thi- this is not a one man's show, nor a one woman's show. Decisions cannot be made unilaterally, then you expect councils to come and vote on it. I think it's, I feel stripped, I think it's unfair, and if I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected. But I think there needs to be more communication from the administration with council. It's unfair for, expects us to do something when you haven't included us in anything. So it's nothing personal, and for that reason, until I can get better, a better understanding, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council. That's all I have for ordinances and resolutions. If it would please, council, mayor and council, I will go immediately into my administrative report.
We have one more resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize, I did overlook number five. Mayor and council, for your consideration, resolution 2024.005. A resolution for mayor and council to approve application of funds associated with the EDA grant. Funds will be, will support the Akline Drainage Project and all matters related thereto. The Akline Drainage Project- The Ackline Drainage Project was originally at fourteen eight, fourteen million, eight hundred ten thousand. Uh, the EDA is willing to move forward with thirteen million, five hundred thousand. Uh, we are going to commit that when it's time to come up with our share of the funds, uh, we will be able to supply them with the one million four roundabout that they're asking for the match.
Okay. I need a motion to approve resolution 2024.005 for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions, counsel?
I just want to make a comment on, you know, this is kind of the area I work in. I've never seen a town get such a big one for stormwater, like ever. So I don't know who did what, but good, good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Askins. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question about the, um, stormwater drainage. Because I've seen on Dancin' Street, and I see this, and I see patchwork going on in Kennedy Park. How can we make Kennedy Park better? This has been, I, I was raised in Kennedy Park. And every time you go down Moore Street, it's always flooded. So how, is there anything in motion for that?
We have some of the individual items that we are addressing. We have several people that are giving us quotes to repair. Um, this project, for truth of the matter, was originated in like 2017, 2015, and it kind of got stuck on the back burner. But the, the just of the paperwork and the just of the, the legwork had been done. It brought, was brought back to surface, and with some of the support we got, we were able to get it to the, the, um, to the table. Uh, we do have two other drainage problems we're working on. One is, um, Highway 52, and one is called Independence. They will encompass other streets. I can't speak that, the street that you're talking about.
It's right.
It may be included in that group, but we also have two other drainage prob, drainage uh, projects that we are trying to get through the cycle now. It was just, this one was able to be handled a lot quicker.
How many years would that, and the street closed down?
Five.
About five years?
Yes.
How long it took that project done in?
With the help of the city staff, we, we moved it along expeditiously. With the help of Roger Kirby, uh, bringing the state and, and on the conversation, um, they supplied us with the, um, material, and we paid for the labor. So it took about, once the material arrived during COVID, um, the supply chain was not there. They had to literally build those seven-foot round, um, cylinders. And, um, it took, what, about three weeks to get the project done?
Is Chief Driggers still in?
Chief Driggers? He's around the corner.
This gonna be gone, this gonna be gone, South Ackline gone?
I will name a few of the streets.
Yep, that's what I wanted to explain.
Ackline Street, North Ackline Street, Calhoun Street, Moore Street, Wes Thomas Street, Lee Street, Jackson Street, McAllister Street, Wilbraugh Street, Wilcox Street, Florence Avenue.
So it's titled Ackline Drainage Project, but just not Ackline, where some people may just think Ackline. But it, just like he stated, it encompasses all those streets.
And I think they named it Ackline because Ackline is the main street that will lead it all the way back to the swamp. With the swamp is actually that property that's running behind Walmart and all on the backside of, of Lake Street.
And we do have copies out there for the public to pick up, if you like, if you have not yet.
But the big thing, as long as we get these drainage issues fixed first before we start paving all these roads, because there ain't no need to pave all the roads, then have to come back and dig the roads up to fix pipes, so.
Well, and look at what we just did on the side of the river tracks over here, and that's probably gonna have to be dug up again and then repaid. But I agree with you. That's like some of the streets that we had refixed the water, uh, lines in that a council member, Spring, was able to give us funds to pave the streets. We had to work with him to, to fix the water lines, and then they went through and paved the streets. So we wouldn't be digging them up later on.
Right. So you're absolutely right.
Today, um, I went down Meeting Street. It is absolutely ridiculous. Meeting Street is horrible, horrible. Something needs to be done now. Should have been done ten years ago. That street has, I'll say digits in it.
Now, I'm not sure if that's a city, street, or a county street.
But it is still a hazard.
DOT, Roger, and J.
It's a hazard.
That street.
It is.
You may, you wanna cry, walk, um, going down that street. If you think Lincoln Avenue is bad, Lincoln Avenue is nothing compared to Meeting Street.
Well, Lincoln Avenue was real bad.
And those two streets, along with certain parts of Carver Street coming in from Barra Street, Moore Street, all the streets on the black side of town. Not all, but the majority of them need repairs. They need to be repaired. Now.
Yeah, they were. Are there any other comments or questions or concerns before we move forth with this resolution? Okay, if none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Now, Mayor and counsel, I will move forward with the, um, financial report for the, this month, ending December 31st, 2023. Mayor and counsel, the general fund, uh, year-to-date revenue is three million, three eighty-five, thirty-three percent of the budget, and the expenditures are five million, fifty-one, forty-nine percent of the budget. Uh, we've overspent based on the revenue, one million, six sixty-five. I remind you that we are, run about sixty days behind in getting our taxes in from the state and the county. So in reality, we're running in line. In the water fund, we have year-to-date revenues of one million, one three, and we have expenditures year-to-date of eight sixty-six. Uh, we have a surplus of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and we're running in line of fifty percent of revenues and at thirty-eight percent of expenditures. In the sewer area, we have, uh, year-to-date revenues of three million, five, ninety percent of the budget. We have expenses of two million, four eighty-eight, sixty-three percent of the budget, a surplus of one million, seventeen thousand. In the stormwater, uh, we have year-to-date revenues of a hundred and five. We have expenses of twenty-five, a surplus of eighty thousand dollars. In the reserves for the water reserve account, we have revenues, we have reserves year-to-date of thirty-six thousand, eight seventy in the water, and in the sewer side, a year-to-date sewer reserves of thirty-six thousand, sixty-seven. And that's the financials for December, 2023. Mayor and counsel, for your consideration and for your approval, bills to be approved for January 9th, one through 10.
Need a motion to approve bills, items one through 10, for January 9th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Any one second? No one second?
I think we have more questions about the bills.
Let me ask, since we didn't get a second, and Councilman Askins just came in, does it, does it die, or?
It was on the floor long enough to have died.
Okay. Nope. We can, we can have, if I miss, if I must say, we can ask the questions. Bill's definitely gotta get paid.
My question is number 10.
Okay, so, so we really need to, to go further to have questions? We need to, we had the motion, we need to second, just for the motion to go through and to have questions?
You have Askins.
Now, afterwards, if you don't want to vote for these bills after your questions and concerns, then that's your option to do. So I'm gonna ask again for a motion to approve bills, items one through 10.
Move to approve bill one through 10.
Seconded.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions? What questions do we have?
Wait a minute.
That Blanchard deal for me, seventy-one thousand dollars. Work on the bulldozer, what, what was rolling up?
The, a staff member put death fuel into hydraulic system. Our bran, our, um, bulldozer, that was not even a, right at a year old. And to save the warranty on it, it had to go back to the manufacturer and be drained and rebuilt. And no one person would take ownership of their mistake. So two people were written up for that, and this is the bill to fix the unit. Now, as my discussion with Ricky was, he had to give up something on his capital list to help pay for this.
That's, that's a lot of money.
It sure is.
That's a lot of money for one.
It sure is.
That, that ain't a small.
You said two people were written up. Um, how were you able to, um, determine or ascertain which of the two, or which is the culprit?
The, the two people that were written up were the ones that used it on a regular basis. It was in one particular area, it stayed in that area.
So they don't have a way of, um, documentation and accountability whenever?
They fill up their, when they bring, they bring the fuel out, they bring the fuel out. They don't take it into this heavy equipment, the fuel's delivered. And it's left, and as they bring the unit up to the pumping truck, and they fill it up, and they put, um, death fuel in the hydraulic system. One of two people.
How long was it down?
It's been in the shop for a couple of weeks. We finally, when we finally got the word what transpired, that's when we started doing investigations.
So you, you took it there, they did a diagnostic, found out that it was what you said it was. And now this is the.
Is Ricky, Ricky? I don't think Ricky's here tonight.
No, I haven't seen him.
Do you remember the cost of the, um?
I wanna, roughly, I wanna say it was like two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That's just off the top of my head.
So who did repairs then?
Blanchard Mechanical, Mechanic, Machinery. Cater, yeah, the Caterpillar place. We took it back to maintain the warranty for the rest of the life of the warranty. We took it back to the manufacturing company. And, and when we, when we started, we called Florence County, and they went through the very same thing. But theirs cost more to fix than ours.
I think that was a lot of money, but could be authorized for that. It's like something we need.
That is correct, but it's still.
You gotta pay the people, man.
They like to be a person that I'm at.
It's just a lot of money.
Did they tell you the cost before you, um?
It was kind of an ongoing issue as they were going through it. And then they finally got to the end. They said, well, we got it all tore up. This is what's happened. This is what transpired. To get it all put back together, this is what it's gonna cost. See, some, some of these things, you know after the fact, when they get it tore apart, you have no choice but to move forward and get it fixed.
You know, it seemed to me that this is not the first time they have done anything like this, worked on the engine or whatever. Was it the engine part?
Oh, yes, the, the whole, basically, the whole unit was dead.
And you'd, I would think that they would know on a day-to-day basis, or hire often to do these repairs, that they will have a general idea, give at least a ballpark of the maximum before you authorize them to repair it.
Any other questions? Or any other items on the bill list before we vote on bills? Okay, if, if no other questions, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and counsel, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, we have executive session. Present to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act 30 dash four, that's seventy-eight, one dash two, and the discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, and/or promotion of an employee, as well as the discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangement. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Seconded.
Yeah, it's been properly moved as second. All in favor? Thank you.
Never this was put into play about the houses, what was the timeframe for the houses to be completed?
Last spring.
Last spring.
Last first.
And how many contractors have?
Four months window.
Okay, and how many contractors do we have?
One general contractor.
One general contractor for the houses? Was he working the whole time or was he?
He did it.
The general contractor.
He did it out, he subcontracted.
Whatever he did to get the houses done, that was on him.
Him.
We didn't have any say so in that. Randy and the Building Code Department and Safe Built worked with him. We actually removed ourselves from any inspections to protect the city and let Safe Build do all that.
So that's a waived group, right?
Waived development out of the Charleston area.
Okay, well that is it. Again, I hope that everyone has a wonderful night, a wonderful year, and again, stay vigilant and stay safe.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Happy New Years 2024. It seems it gonna be a good year this year. We moving forward, making positive moves. I don't have much on my agenda to say, but let's continue to do the right thing and work to keep the city moving forward.
And I apologize, excuse me for standing because my back is talking.
Okay, thank you everyone. Thank you council members for your reports tonight. Thank everybody who came out. I know that we had executive session and I know that we don't have the crowd that we had before, but we do have Facebook, social media who is still listening and I thank you all for still tuning in. I want to first thank everyone who supported me, prayed for me, encouraged me during my first year as mayor. Yesterday marked the year as I've been blessed to be in this esteemed position as your mayor. 2023 was a great and successful year, more ups and downs, and I'm ready for 2024. So thank you Lake City. Some people, some, I was told that some people said that I was not the person for the job or the position and that's definitely fine for their opinion, but I can say that I am the woman for the job because this is Lake City, this is my hometown, I love Lake City and I will continue to stand for Lake City. With that being said, I would like to announce we will have my inaugural State of the City address on January 25th, starting at 6:00 PM at the continuum on new things, accomplishments that we're going to address the city accomplishments of 2023 and the visions and goals of 2024. It is open to the public, so please invite everyone. It will be live on Facebook as well if you cannot come in person. More upcoming events on January 27th, the City of Lake City will host a workshop where our citizens can come in and learn about the USDA programs on home ownership and home repairs and that will be at the continuum as well. More information to come on that. Like I was stated before, January 15th is MLK Day celebration. Due to Ms. Paula Morris, she usually facilitates this event and they will not have a march this year, but they will, it will be held at the Main Street Elementary School at 10:00 AM. The speaker will be Mr. Antoine Jones who is 11th grader. He is an 11th grader at Lake City High School. Florence School District 3 will be honoring Dr. Ronnie McNear life and legacy at the Bean Market on January 26th at 9:30 AM. The Ronnie McNear Committee will be hosting the McNear Candlelight Visual at the Ronnie McNear Memorial Park on January 28th at 5:30 PM. If any inclement weather, it will be held at the Wesley United Methodist Family Worship Center. Last but not least, I want to assure all citizens that the City of Lake City has not been at any point in time without services from our police department. Our police department has never ceased operation. We are in the process of finding a police chief and I give my heartfelt gratitude to Sheriff TJ Joy, Captain Darren Yarborough, and the staff of the Florence County Department for the great support that they have been giving us. Our men and women in blue have been out there day and night. So I thank our Lake City Police Department for all they do on a daily basis. We are Lake City, we are Florence County, and we are one. So I appreciate everybody on tonight. Happy New Year again and everybody be safe. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Two seconds.
Thank you.